We have to go back and start over.
You better not.
No.
Or riot.
I'll be shocked.
Please don't.
All right. And we do have points in person and virtually. The procedure tonight, as far as any, any issue on the planning board agenda is, I will have the applicant make a presentation. I will then go to the planning board members and solicit comments or questions they may have. Once those have been muddled through and we've got them on the record and responses from the applicant, we will then go to the public. It's your turn to perform. And we would ask that you would come to the dais or to the podium and give us your name and address. And try to limit your presentation questions to three minutes. So please don't be repetitive. If something's already been said, there's no reason to repeat it. We've taken notes on this concern and we will proceed accordingly. If you have a written statement you'd like to make, if you can make a copy of that available to us for the record, so we could literally put it in herbatim, that would be very helpful, making sure we have accurate minutes. And all that being said, that is how, and then we will take it under normal circumstances, we will take action this evening. But specific to this particular application we're discussing tonight, there will not be any particular action tonight. As a fact finding session, we want to hear what the applicant has come up with as far as his revised plan. And we also want to hear from you folks as to what you think of it or any of your concerns. Before I get too far along, let me open, oh, excuse me, anybody here that would like to address the planning board on an issue that is not on our agenda tonight? If you're here for something that's not on our agenda, now's the time to speak. We will move on to a reopening of a hearing for marks engineering representing Carol Eifer, owner of property at thirty-five thirty-five State Route three sixty-four. And they are seeking a preliminary subdivision approval and preliminary site plan approval for the construction of two single-family residences, one hundred and sixteen townhomes, and two thousand feet of new dedicated road. And this is being continued from our hearing on August the twenty-fourth. And I think that being said, I'll let the applicant make his presentation regarding the revised plan.
To get things started, my name is Salvi Tridello. I'm the attorney for the project. And I just want to go over a few big picture items before I cast it off the running. So we revise the site plan to really address the crux of the board's concerns and then also your concerns. The primary concern being stormwater, traffic, safety, and also, you know, how the view is going to be actually looking from both three sixty-four and from the lake. So we made some good changes. You could open up that presentation.
It is open. That's it.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Last slide. Just the, I don't know if everyone here can see it.
I can turn the, I'll turn it a little bit. I just want to make sure the board can see it.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Can we minimize our Zoom screens there?
You know, the main thing you talked about was that roads coming straight down.
You gotta stop them.
What we did is we have, you know, so the path is still straight down.
Hey, Sal.
Just standard.
Talk to the, present to the board though, please.
Yeah, you're, there you go.
But so we, I had to provide this, to provide a few things, aid to the traffic, a traffic calming measure. So you're coming down here, you'll also have the crosswalks and these are just the raised crosswalks and slow traffic. And also, anyone coming through has to go through this one here. And also relation to buildings, we were able to increase the effectiveness of the stormwater management. You see we have this pond here, which is uphill. And we also have this pond here, which will kind of have the aesthetics. We have proposed this, so crosswalk here coming through with the boardwalk going over the pond. Also, in here, we'll have like the dog park and playground, kind of a community center, recreation area. Go to site six. So as I said, for the stormwater, I wanted to show the side right on your leg. Why don't you say if you're part of the stormwater infrastructure? So over a million dollars is going to be spent just on improving stormwater infrastructure. It's not, you know, something that we'll see return on. This strictly could improve the effectiveness of the stormwater. So we have different stormwater mains running, these different valves. If you see up here, as the water comes down, you have six power pumping cells that will collect stormwater.
Well, I'm going to have to bring it along the trailer.
So this pond will collect stormwater.
That's the trailer park.
And then actually guys down here.
Oh, wow.
So. So in all this infrastructure, in the, you know, typical one-year storm, stormwater runoff from the site reduced by seven, seven percent. A ten-year flood event is up to ninety-six percent, to ninety-five point nine-six. And then a hundred-year storm, about forty-six percent reduction in stormwater, beating the site. So I mean.
From, from today?
From today, so undeveloped.
Current, yeah.
To.
That's a really good point.
In the ten-year storm, ninety-five, ninety-six percent reduction. And it's also pretty capable of, you know, that stormwater runoff, but also the problem of hail movement. And, you know, collecting that water that's running out of the farms and treating the water before it reaches its final destination. Those are some of the changes I want to highlight. Do you see the traffic calming measures there and then also with the stormwater? You know, that's really what seemed to be the crux of the complaints. Now, back up a little bit, you know, ATL contractors, we're local contractors, my dad and my brother. We have, they had a lot of experience doing townhomes. As you know, the Cuba Shores project, which there having some criticism of. Yeah, I think it's important to look at that to the testament to the developer's ability to complete a project at this scale. It was a project that also started about one year before COVID and never stopped. There's a lot of construction around the area that stopped completely, even COVID happened. We didn't stop. They kept going and still on track to complete that. But importantly, this project is not Cuba Shores. Cuba Shores was eighty-two units on about eleven something acres. So it's a density of around eight units to the acre. What we propose here is about three and a half to the acre. So if you drive through Cuba Shores and you find yourself thinking, you know, wow, this is pretty dense, it is dense. You know, it's up to about the industry standard of eight to the acre. This is less than half of that. So, you know, we really do feel this is in line with the character of the community and, and, you know, just reasonable and responsible development of the parcel. Now, back to the point about us being local developers, this is an entirely local project. It's being financed by a local bank. And we're employing hundreds of local contractors and subcontractors that will have worked for the next few years building this project. So this is a thirty-five million dollar investment in Canadaigua that will directly impact local stakeholders and local working families. So, and on top of that, you know, the master plan calls for addition of thirteen hundred residential units. And we're proposing about ten percent of that in an area that's been identified by the town as a growth node that's compatible with this kind of development. And one other topic I just want to touch on really quick is the buildings on the lower half in that move. You may have seen that there's now a mix of like one and two-story buildings there. And I'm sure some people have raised their eyebrows. I just want to remind you that the footprints of those buildings are all about twelve to fifteen feet below elevation of Route three sixty-four. The property comes through, it slopes down. If you could go to the very next slide, just to cross section. So three sixty-four slows down.
Yeah.
Coming back up. So from the road, you probably won't see maybe just the top row. In the lake, you'll probably see just those top three rows. Because those other ones are going to be below three sixty-four. And there's also going to be significant vegetation around, you know, minimizing the view, the impact. So this is big pictures up I wanted to touch on. I'll pass it over to Brennan to get some of the details.
Introduce yourself. Yeah, good evening. My name is Brennan Marks. I'm marks engineering, a design engineer for the project. To develop this, and we've done it for the sport a few times. We've heard their concerns and we wanted to, we've brought together a new set of drawings here that we're introducing tonight that, that we feel is address most of these concerns. So the development project still is one hundred and sixteen townhomes and eleven new single-family residents. It does extend into the town of Hopewell and connects to Conroy eighteen from three sixty-four. The next slide there. The changes to the plan, as Sal talked about a second ago, is revised well alignment on the lower portions of the site to create a loop road, adding about a thousand foot of dedicated road to the project. That will produce traffic calming, a little bit more community space in the center. And a more of a, a community on a lower level there, a little loop road. The, we've also added a community building, which is building number one. What I should say, a partial community, partially community space, which will be a Mount PS Fitness Center leasing office and other amenities for the whole community. That will be in community or in building number one. The second floor of building one will be residential units, so the residential units above and community space below. The community space will run out onto the roof road towards the southeast. The, we've added a second stormwater pond up behind building eight and nine. This is just, this is further up the hill to catch water that comes down on the new road. And also provide additional retention, which we've shown you the reductions one way through again here. Speaking to the community, the, the, the complete streets design, we did not put a twenty-five foot wide roadway in. It still is twenty-two foot wide roadway. However, we feel as though we've met the needs of the complete street by putting in a shared use path, which is an eight-foot wide path that would be divided with a line, one half for walking, one half for biking. It's very similar to how they do it on the right now. And then also down the other side of the street, there's another sidewalk. So we've got a lot of sidewalks in this project and one of them, which we use for sharing use bike and walking. We've added a bus stop into the community, or sorry, on the lower loop, we've added a bus stop, which is right in from the entrance. We'll have a pavilion, basically we'll be able to invite RTS to use that as well as maybe school bus. I think this is a good point to talk about the, the, why we only did a loop road on the bottom versus a loop road on the top. So on the upper portions of the site, which we've been calling phase two, are the site topography is anywhere between ten to fourteen percent. So if you look at that topography, it's about seven foot arises, fifty foot of width, right? Average house width fifty feet. So five, seven foot rise, it works perfectly for those buildings, these are walkout basements. However, if we were to turn the buildings at a ninety or even a forty-five, you may see up to twenty-one feet of elevation increase across the hundred and fifty foot of building. So if we had twenty-one feet of elevation adjustment to make, and you're talking significant retaining while significant earthwork. And then the loop road would not even be feasible with the grades to meet that eight percent maximum, which is the town standard. So we looked at it, we looked at it very closely, but the topography up there lends more to walkout basements in ranch houses versus a loop road. So I will go to the next slide. As opposed to natural resource protection and open space protection was a very big part of the conversations last time. So we went through the NRI plan, which the town has put together a master plan for the natural resource inventory and protection. So basically, I went through the, that plan, item by item, to, to identify an inventory, natural resources on the site. And I plotted them out here. So the first one that the, the, the natural resource inventory looks at is hardwood forest, northern, successional northern hardwood forest. So there's not, that is not included in the strategic forest protection area, which is mostly on the, the west side of the lake. With lands around Route twenty-one and, and that hill. We identified some of the northern hardwood forests, as you can see in the upper right, with highlighted in red there. Those are your hardwoods, which are deciduous and they fall foliage. This is picture was taken in two thousand nine, where the foliage was in full bloom. So we could identify the hardwood there. The rest of the lot is very brushy scrub, hawthorns, a lot of dead ash. And other very low scrub brush, very hard to walk through there. The second figure on the, on the bottom there, if you want to scroll down, is our steep slopes. We've identified these areas on the site as steep slopes, which is greater than fifteen percent. They're all less than twenty-five percent. These areas of the plan, or these areas we have planned around, we're protecting these slopes. We're not building in these slopes. There is an overlap between the hardwood forest and the steep slopes in the upper right-hand corner. So the next slide, continuing down the natural resource report from the town's plan. One of them that talks about is the views from the Canadaigua Lake. If you can see there on the right, we've photo, photoshopped, or I should say, we've used a, a very complex modeling software to render this, these buildings onto the hillside there. And we've taken a drone picture from eighty feet above the water out in the lake. The, as you can see there, that, that, the, the, just the colored areas above the houses and on the, on the shoreline, those are what, what the development would look like looking from the lake. The, this is not a, not even a four-story high-rise. This is, um, there, there is, I would call four levels to the project, but they are also stretched out over two thousand feet, right? So it's not like we're vertically rising, we're stretching this development out over two thousand feet of land. On the left there is, is the, a small freshwater wetland that has been identified as a possible wetland. It has not been deemed as a jurisdictional wetland. And we are working with the Army Corps to per jurisdictional request. And it's our opinion, since it's only thirty-five hundred square feet, the Army Corps of Engineers will probably not take jurisdiction on this. The blue line you can see there is an intermittent ditch that crosses the site from north to south, which drains from south to north. So we're, again, we're waiting for the jurisdictional request from the Army Corps to determine who, who has jurisdiction on that. There is no jurisdiction been claimed by the D E C or the Army Corps. It will essentially be just a wet area that mayor can, it may be filled in by the developer. So next slide is our open space. But anyways, the green areas are what we have highlighted as open space that we're putting forth in this project, right? So you can see we've excluded the steep slope areas, we've excluded the paved areas, excluded the rooftops, the sidewalks, the stormwater management facilities. This is how we come up with our calculations for open space, which lot one we calculated at seventy-one percent open space. Lot two, we've calculated at fifty-six percent open space. And lot three is, again, fifty-six open space, fifty-six percent. And the next slide is a stormwater slide again, but I'll touch on a few things that Sal. Yes, lot one, that's correct. That is correct, yes. So. Stormwater management, as, as Sal mentioned, as you can see, it shaded in pink, there is a bio retention facilities that will catch stormwater coming off of the townhouses, townhome units themselves in the private driveways adjacent to them, will collect into the, the pink bio retention areas. Then it'll follow the orange lines, which is the new storm sewer networks, down to what we call pond number two, which is that upper pond behind building eight and nine, which will surge, retain stormwater, treat water quality, and then overflow to pond number one, which is the lowest point of the site, which will again go through additional retention and treatment. And then it'll discharge towards the north, if you scroll down a little bit. On the north side, it actually, the water from the site flows to the north, which is a drainage ditch on the trailer park property. That north actually flows towards the east, flows north along the backside of the mobile home park. And then flows west and then crosses East Lake Road and flows out to the lake.
I think this is higher.
Drive, at a property along Sandy Beach Drive. So it's a, it's not a straight shot to the lake from the front of the site, but it goes north and, and meanders towards, until it gets to the lake. So we have done the model on this, and the one-year storm again, from existing conditions, what it is now, brush and scrub, the developed site will have a seventy-seven percent reduction in that stormwater volume. The ten-year, we're, we're essentially just about retaining the entire storm, very little discharge. Or sorry, very little discharge from the site, yes. Then the hundred here is a forty-six percent reduction, approximately forty-six percent reduction in flows from existing conditions. So proposed stormwater flow off this site will be significantly less than what they are now. And next slide, next slide. The cross-section of the, of the site that Sal touched on. On the right, being the uphill portions of the site, the, the property on the east, and the left being three sixty-four on the west. If you were to continue to, to the left, you would go down and eventually get to the shoreline, Canadaigua Lake. You can see, I'll point to it here. This is the central line of Route three sixty-four. There, uh, this is the low point of the site, this is pond number two. That elevation difference is approximately twelve feet. So three sixty-four is twelve feet lower than our pond, sorry, pond number one.
Other way around.
Other way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Three sixty-four is supposed to approximately twelve feet higher than pond number one. So the, the water is not going to come down the hill.
Yeah.
So this, this diagram here also shows the bio retention cells on the three buildings on the upper portion of the site, how it flows back to the bio retention cells. It also shows pond number two at the, behind building eight and nine.
Pretty much the same height.
Now the next slide, we just put in some renderings together here for the view. So this is if you were in a car driving north on three sixty-four, you look to your right, you're going to see that residential apartment slash community building on the, on the right there in the entrance to the facility. Use for the next one. This is a, you will looking across the stormwater management pond in the boardwalk and the playground at the community building and slash residential building. This is as you're coming into the site entrance at the loop road, looking left and right. Actually, no, this is, sorry, this is coming down the hill, looking at the loop road, looking left and right. And then your next slide, please. This is looking out the entrance toward three sixty-four from what would be the boardwalk. Keep going down. At the stormwater pond playground and the entrance. Keep going. Looking into the sites from the entrance. Building two on your right, building one on your left. And then the next one.
Especially this.
And then final would be, is just the presentation. That is just a, 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 a site. Showing the buildings, the different layouts or the different building types, the loop, the stormwater ponds. I'd also like to show a picture that we took today, if you can. It is a picture of a balloon that I struggled with all of you. It's, it's set at the height of, if you scroll up two slides. Keep going up one more. The building on the right is building two. That balloon is the peak of building two there. From the entrance. And that, that picture was taken at the edge of three sixty-four. That's that peak point right here. So I just wanted to get.
Oh, here.
Sure. Pass that around. We need one copy back up here. No, we have our copy, never mind.
And, and Bob, I did get your comments. Thank you. It was very, very thrilled. I appreciate that a lot. I did want to ask the board and Bob, how, how are you looking to respond? Obviously, we don't, we're not making decisions tonight. I can respond in writing back to the board, as you guys can all interpret it in that way.
Yeah.
Or I can go each fine point back with you. It's up to you guys.
I think for the record, Bob should enter into the record his comments. And then the response would probably be in writing.
Okay.
But let's make sure that the audience understands what the board's concerns are. And Bob, when he's kicked it all, if you're done.
I am done. Unless there's any immediate questions.
Okay, applicant rests. I'll turn to the playing board as far as comments, questions, concerns, starting with Bob O'Coore.
Folks, let's have, have it quiet so the, so everybody can hear, if we can.
Building, parcel building number two and parcel building number three. Yes. Yeah, if the Army Corps, the D E C takes it over, we would be required to mitigate that weather. Which then we may do with the current mitigation, which would be buying into a fund, which stores wetlands of quality and, for a very decent break. All very high rate.
Decent for the state.
Bob, can you speak up a little, please?
After researching all the.
Yeah.
Reviewing the public's concern, things like that. And overall, I just want to say, random, first loop, I think, to fix that. Got a sidewalk, it's actually perfectly, that's just going to be a really nice community right there. I think we fall short of the setting up the hill. And I just planted it here. Sidewalk on the upstairs, up there. And that's shade of it. I did go look a few up. Like you said, it's very high. It very seems like as soon as you get on the driveway, some of the parts are parked on their driveway, but in the street sometimes. It's that, that height. Not have a lot of space on those parts. So you shed, you talked about that later, about how you said in the natural resource and open protection, Dr. note. How the shed is going to look like the community, does that mean your community or does the surrounding community? Because the surrounding community, bringing the new family homes, the trailer park, is, is it going to look like your? Because the surrounding community, bringing new family homes, uh the trailer park, is is it going to look like your community or community that you know is like? The phasing. It would be nice to know exactly, like I said, how long each phase is gonna be. Kind of mention that that the roads are gonna be done after two years.
Say that again.
Those are the numbers that drove the mitigation factors on the turning. So, not only that, but then in that study, it also says that were said marginally satisfied. Were marginally satisfied. Even that like, even it was just margin, and I think once you read the numbers, or when you look at them, I think that I think your your assessment, my assessment was set on the first plan.
Get the part one.
We talked about this trail, being a bark multitrail, I talked about it here that minimum the six foot rail. Uh, we do mention a bark trail. Be very hard to walk on, I think. And you talked also that there's an ADA, a couple ADA apartments that are on east side, but if you move that to the other side of that hill, there was like a flat area where the ADA could possibly have a nice sidewalk or a trail system that's hard to drive or something that they could use. There's no crosswalk, it's just pan. In phase two, have a trail system. This would be quite the minus, the water go all the way up to two failing houses. And then man taking behind for the houses that are up there.
Can I interrupt, I think it might be useful for the applicant and the public, Bob, can you tell them? I I think you mean more than we looked at, I think you mean provide more detail and backup. Can you tell, maybe this would be a good opportunity for the board to tell the applicant what what exactly. Oh, okay.
So they had an impact to the lake, which I would like to, unfortunately also. I think you, your company's done a great job identifying how to control it. Uh, with your plan that you swing up our eyes, that I review, with all the retentions. Financial risk, I can't really talk about that. And then resources, sewer and power came back, I somewhat understand. I don't have an answer on the schools, if the schools can handle the income for the U P. He also had a problem about the residential lake district, which is not so.
Yeah, uh, if you guys want, I can take a quick step.
Yeah, quickly, if you can just get quick responses, but then follow up with the detail.
Okay, yeah, so regarding the loop I mentioned earlier. Uh, topography on the upper side of the slope, on the side of the hill, changes significantly, so fifty feet. You're losing your seven foot elevation change, if you were, then that's the building perpendicular to this or parallel with the slope, right? So if we even turn that a little bit, or even forty five degrees, you know, you've got a zero and you've got a fourteen foot elevation change across the building, that's got a lot of path, so. Doing that, there you go, you can see that the bottom side, it works, because the lower units are relative, the the existing devices are flat. When you start to climb the hill, if you turn those at a skew, um, we're talking significant earthwork, significant retention retaining walls and significantly more disturbance, so. The other thing is, is those like units have a view of the lake, uh, that's an important part of this, um, is to get capture of the lake. Those are further away from three sixty four in the lake, so they they're not gonna be necessarily in the view of three sixty four, right? You're not gonna see them as much, and also like the further away from the lakes, you're not gonna see them as much, so. That was the reason why we we did do a look with Logan, the planner, he's done it, he did a lot of renderings up there. We took a hard look at the grades and it's just big disturbance as far as grade goes. Private driveways on those those upper lots are the private drives in the sidewalks, sidewalks. Um, those sort of private, you got eight people or eight residential units using accessing out to the dedicated street. Not necessarily warrants a sidewalk for for those that low number of vehicles, or sorry, people and vehicles. It's not gonna be very many, much traffic on it, it's not the main dedicated road. Also following suit with some of the other townhome developments like Liquid Meadows, where they've developed theirs, which doesn't have sidewalks. This one, we're proposing sidewalk, so the dedicated road. The, as far as the view shed goes, with this community being single family residential community, this these are most, these are all single family lot residential, I should say, family units, uh, it is multi-residential. But they're low rise, one, two stories, which we'd see like of the most of the houses around here, we're proposing final siding. Five, six, twelve pitch roofs, which are blend with the community, maybe not necessarily with the mobile home community, but they're not necessarily allowed by code either, mobile home, hopefully that becomes a new residential facility at some point too. So that's the that's the community we're talking about. Terms of phasing, we didn't necessarily give you any timelines in that phasing report, we've said before, two to three years, it it may be, it's like three to four year project. We've been talking about how we're gonna do this, the thing that you you might have read in there is is the time it takes to coat the final, the top coating on the street. So it's just a two year period, you pay to put the road base down, it takes two years before you can topcoat it, that's a requirement of the town. So that's the two years, it does, we didn't say two years per phase, so it's two years after we put the road base down to pave it. There's just always just putting that in there as basic, but we didn't necessarily give you timeframes on that, three to four years looks more like the duration of this project. As far as the SWIP. No, total. Yeah, yeah. Uh, the phase one and phase two will overlap mostly on the infrastructure, the road and utilities, so they're gonna continue up the road of the utilities. Like every building houses behind it as they go up the hill. As far as SWIP coordinator goes, the tonic end is MS four, Chris Jensen is Ben, I understand he still is the coordinator for that. He is also going to do inspections, we are as a design engineer, we'll be doing SWIP inspection. And the coordinator is actually the contractor's responsibility, so he's gonna be there making sure that the the report is being maintained, kept, and also followed. So, and we're we're two overseers on that, so. And that is a D E C requirement, and there's also an M S four requirement, so Chris is very good at job. We will include this erosion settlement control in the phasing report, uh, that we have mentioned in the SWIP, that's a good point. Traffic impact study, so they say forty two percent of the cars are leaving during the peak hour, right? Right, so the the traffic impact study calls peak hours, which between the hours of seven A M and nine A M. And then they do an analysis on the peak hour, which is in this case is seven A M to eight A M. So forty few cars between seven A M and eight A M. There may be forty cars leaving between eight A M and nine A M, so I'm not saying that all of them, there there's only forty two cars leaving in the morning. It's, you know, that hour we did the study. And we're also distributed across two different entrances too, so. Well, um, and I know, we have reached out to the D O T. New York State D O T has sent us an email back for conceptual review, and I'll read it to you from Zachary Stark. As for my last email, I would like to see more site distance values in terms of the best location of the driveway, which is me, how far you see from each direction. That's fine, we'll handle that with that, in general, a driveway here will be acceptable, I have no comments on the traffic impact study. The volumes are very low and and we will not require the additional highway mitigation. That's from the D O T, so if they don't want a turning lane, we follow what the D O T says. So, uh, we can't put a, they can't put a turning lane on a D O T road. That's what they say. They didn't put it yet, but he just said the volume just slowed up so low, we may, we will not require additional highway mitigation, which mitigation being turning lanes late.
On three sixty four.
On three sixty. That was his conceptual review of the project. We obviously will do what the D O T tells us to do.
While you're talking traffic real quick. Your driveway, your entrance on the three sixty four lines up directly across the street from the driveway to the point, right?
Used to.
Used to.
Low loop road relocated to the north.
So it's offset?
It's offset.
Is that good? Usually you try to have a you don't, you don't want an offset because it's traffic over here conflicting with traffic over here potentials. And 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 why did you move it, because you had to do the loop road?
The loop is the the redesign of the loop, has moved the entrance towards the north, yes. Typically, they would say you don't wanna line them up unless it's an intersection controlled by light or stop sign, where then they can, two people can communicate, right? In this case, someone pulls out, she had a point, someone pulls out of this, this, the residential development, there's no control, they could possibly run into each other. Check like across the street, you usually want at least, well, a hundred and fifty foot of separation between entrances, so there's no confusion. Where he's turning out and he's turning out, then you both are getting right before, so you can see each other, so you don't run into each other.
And you don't have a hundred and fifty?
I don't exactly know how much I have, but this is, we're talking roads here, to show a point is driveway, this is a road.
Well, services twenty, folks, how many, how many homes is it in the point? Yes, yes, ma'am, just shout it out. Oh, okay, I I think there's a twenty, twenty homes. So it's more than just a residential driveway.
The
It's something you should consider.
I'll then I'll definitely work through it with the D O T also, they're gonna have comment on that for sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll take your full suggestions on the trail, full suggestions on the ADA, some of those are great suggestions for us. Crosswalks, we'll take a look at that. Figure out the best locations for those, the water situation is, the water pressure at the single family houses is not enough. So they can't, we can't extend the water map there, there's, there's not enough pressure to feed those houses, that's why they're they're fed off private wells at this time. We had an oversight of bike going up the hill.
I had a question about the traffic before I forget, the, if you hammerhead the road and it doesn't go into Hopewell. So you have one exit on that side, I'm wondering if the D O T will change.
Well.
Their opinion.
Because of the, again, more than thirty units on a single access point, see if they have two entrance points into it, that we would have a connection through.
No.
Yeah, not a traffic connection.
Units without sprinklering, and I'm assuming you're gonna sprinkle these.
What, um, there would be an emergency, yes, but
Right.
The plan is the connection through. The connection of the dedicated.
Okay, done responding to Bob.
Unless you, the other two is the landscape, the natural landscape buffer, we plan to leave a strip there approximately fifteen foot wide of natural vegetation. Along the backside of the houses on group three sixty four. I can't speak for the schools, we can look into that. I'd be glad to look into it.
Isn't Marcus even on the other side, though?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so.
We, I don't know.
No, we didn't get a response, I don't think we sent, we didn't send it to F L C C and the school, we're gonna do that. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
I agree with a lot of, a lot of thoughts that you can break down, I'll do this, some of his comments. One, lower section is determined, I welcoming, it looks like a nice place for people to live. And then the top section, I just looks like a just is not welcome. It's just not, yeah, community friendly.
Yeah, I know.
And then the town does need more affordable housing. It doesn't necessarily say it should all be rental. So, I mean, one of the things I was considering, you've got all the rental property with phase one. Um, if you make that road a little, make it a little curvy, could you actually make phase two? Or sale houses, but smaller patio homes or things of that nature, not the, not, you know, big two story colonials. Twenty five hundred square feet type homes, but other homes that fifty four sale. It would make it a more natural setting and available for no, no people want to come in. That was just something that I draw as consideration to think about, and that might enable you to have a different design for that phase two section. So that, that's kind of my general on the layout. Stormwater protection. Trying to mitigate that, the two different ponds and all these attention areas. One thing that I I asked is and I guess it was on slide, was it six? So when it comes out of that lower retention pond, you follow the blue line north and then uh west. That natural path of of the water, having to size that to make sure that that path can accommodate any water that's coming from this parcel, or is there something we're gonna have to do to that path, so that that doesn't overflow? Uh, and cause no more damage and cause overflow to the houses and everything that's in that blue path. So I I'd be concerned about that, I'd like to see some analysis that shows that signs the handle of water is gonna come from this. And then lastly, I think. Maybe we did not see it happen. Done and how it presented, but yeah, the traffic studying scene will be as well. I I just wonder if I bring up to the board. Is it independent traffic study, is that something that the board could do and the town would be willing to pay for?
No.
No, we won't pay for it, but we can, we can ask for it to be done, it's the board, if it's in the board's, you know. Opinion that it needs to be done, we can request that.
So. So, let me think about this for a second, so seeker requires a traffic analysis on your part. And the way you do that is by considering expert opinions such as a traffic and a traffic study. That is prepared by a licensed professional. It looks like that's what you, you have a traffic report, not a traffic study, if you want a traffic study done. That may give you more information that would make it more reliable for you. You could also reject the traffic study for a report prepared if you find it wholly not credible. I think if, I think the the path forward here is to have Brennan. Have what is SRF punch it up a little bit, those numbers are probably not numbers they imagined. They're numbers from the National Highway of the Highway Study Research Group or what, whatever the standard is. National Transportation Board, something like that. They're pub- published figures that say a residential unit, you know, apartment complex of X size. Typically produces this many. You know, maybe they can provide you some backup to that, that may, that may explain it, I think Brennan's point was well taken. Forty forty two leave between seven and eight AM. Another forty might leave between eight and nine AM. That, I mean, to me, kind of sounds reasonable. Out of a hundred and sixteen, you're not gonna have everybody leave first thing in the morning.
It also is very dependent on. The neighborhood and the clientele who's in.
Exactly.
Have a retirement community.
Not a lot of seven AM.
Then you are, if you're gonna have, you know. Upcoming, you know, families with.
Young professionals.
People that are. Like to see a couple of towns. Buddies who join in together to rent the work these things. I just think.
Yeah.
That neighborhood, the way it is being designed and the.
You have demographics is the, is the answer and you have.
Would indicate that it might be a higher body than what would normal.
Yeah, so. So, you know, the applicant has demographic, a target audience and maybe you can have your SRF punch that up and really. Really sell it so that the board finds it useful, credible and useful information.
Um, good, I think, I can definitely SRF to provide some further clarification to the report they did and what their basis is. And then also, you know, I would also ask that maybe the town engineer take a look at it. Because they've also experienced traffic where they also have may have someone that they can consult to to review the report for validity. As though it's not another thing coming from the. Project developer, it's coming from your own engineer telling you what he says.
Does SRF also? Analyze the fact that there's gonna be two entrances?
Yes.
And add the eight or the however many houses in?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think like you said, we've got a mixed clientele here with rentals, you're gonna have some, some, some birds, you're gonna have some. Baby boomers, you're gonna have some retirements and then maybe some younger professionals. Again, those all don't necessarily have the same schedule of getting up and leaving at seven in the morning or whatnot, so. And that's all based on, that's all figured in the development, so.
You have the influence of school buses, which probably were not included originally, but I don't think we talked about. School, school buses coming into the development.
And all the transportation.
Other factors, if they entered the study to make sure.
I definitely can have them clarify where they use for for background data, but they just basically. What IT is, international traffic engineers, what they do is they go out and they count. And they just count it, and so they 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 correlate how many units, how much traffic, and they do that multiple times, that's proven in published book. But those ITs are, they're updated on a, on a regular basis. And they, they produce what they call tracks generated for this, and the chip generation is based on the IT, international traffic engineers. Study of other multi-residential developments, so it's gonna include school buses, RTS, public transportation. So, but I'll have them respond to that.
Okay, our guests are, you got a, you got the traffic engineering one oh one tonight, so. Just come after that, anything else here? Okay, Ryan?
Thanks, bud. Three, three things, and then one is just my gen- general concerns, and second. I'd like to reach out to the engineer. This information. And then the town engineer, and then third, just a clarification on the process. So for our lawyer and chairperson and planner. So, first of all. And and this is not coming out the owners and the applicant, you know, my heart just tells me. This would have been an amazing open space. Community separator, similar to the paddle for Greenway, but there's investment happening and. We have to follow along. So. I do appreciate the the updates, I feel like you you're reaching out to the community and trying to do the right thing. I appreciate the comments for the board members. But my questions are for our town engineer, I can't let you off the hook here, even though you're on the Zooms.
Greg.
Greg Hoteling. Hoteling, make sure you get that right, stay chucked.
Is it hoteling or hoteling?
Hoteling.
Mister, Mister Town Engineers, I guess my my questions are, are your general thoughts about? If we, in the phase two that we we brought up a few times, like. And I'm not trying to discount you, right, I'm just kind of going to our peoples and just trying to be like, what, what would happen on that phase two? If there were, if there was a different road configuration and shape of the house, what is your opinion on that?
Well, I think you're, the problem that you have, or at least the problem that this project presents is you have a relatively long building. So with that particular shape and the contours you have, I think you do have relatively limited ability to rotate things. If you had a smaller structure, you'd have a bit more flexibility. But, you know, these, these townhomes are, you know, whatever, there's like seven units or eight units across, I mean, they're, they're really long. Buildings.
So it's pretty consistent, right, with the earth, earth moving, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that shape of the building is, I mean, that's probably, you know. It's really the only way to put it on the site with that shape of the building, I guess, you know, if I'm playing devil's advocate, do we have to have that shape of a building?
I guess, I guess my major concerns are that steep slope area, and I feel like I want to keep the development out of that steep slopes, right? That's kind of one of my main concerns, so. And then my second question for you, Mister Hoteling, refers to the the stormwater, could you kind of refer like? What is your professional opinion on like how the stormwater goes into the two-stage pond system and and how is it? How do you, what, what are your thoughts on how it handles the storm?
You know, to give my final opinion on this, let me, we'd have to dive into the report, get a little more details on it, but. I will say a two, a two-pond scenario, so to speak, is, it's nothing new. You have it at Fox Ridge, where we have the, the actual four bay is remote from the main pond. And there's other locations, RSM was another one where there was going to be. Multiple-stage ponds, even Lakewood Meadows has a lot of, a lot of their site broken up by, you know, multiple ponds. So there's nothing here that really jumps out at me as being a real concern for having a two, two-stage pond.
And then what about your thoughts on the tra- on the traffic? Issues and overall traffic presence?
Yeah, I guess, I I might not have heard it in Brennan's presentation, but did anyone ask if there was a warrant to study? The additional traffic load on the northern intersections was probably where. Those would, the traffic would be impacted, you know, up on, was it three sixty four and Lake? Lakeshore and then eventually up to three sixty four and five and twenty. And. You also have, in addition to this added traffic load, you have some. Non-typical operations with the Sands Concert, the CMAC events going on, how that, that is overall impacted as well.
Yeah, I think the college, maybe.
And the college is right there as well, yep.
And and Greg, they, they did study the intersection between Lincoln Hill and three sixty four. For the traffic impact, so they did study that intersection.
Yeah, I mean, that's more or less, you know, okay. I guess I'm looking more of like where you have your, you know, an actual stop condition, so that would be the first intersection would be Lakeshore. And three sixty four, whether or not the, you know, if there's any added traffic load that would actually impact anything. I mean, everyone who's here is gonna be heading north for the most part.
And I think that kind of stuff is what you'd anticipate and expect to see in a, in a. For a project of this, of this magnitude.
Yeah.
To get, to get, just to get through seeker, you'd need that kind of information.
Well, it, it was stated that, in fact Brennan offered to do it, to send the traffic report to you MRV. And I think Greg, some of the items you're bringing up right now could be part of your response.
Yep.
So if that's information you're gonna want to see, the applicant will have to provide it.
Certainly. Ryan, are you good?
I'm great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Town Engineer, Mister Hoteling. Hoteling, hotel.
Hoteling.
I'd like to clarify for the record exactly the process where we're at in this process. And where are we go, like, what are the next stage, all of the stages? So that everybody here can get a clear understanding of where, what, what the situation is.
You want to take that or should I?
You, if you want to take the seeker, I'll take the town board M U O.
Yeah, well. For everyone's history of what's, what's transpired, the applicant approached the town board. And requesting a rezoning of this property to a mixed-use overlay, which is an overlay over the existing zoning. The town board looked at it and said, it's a, it's a, it's a logical use. There was no confirmation of the plan design, the layout, anything like that, they just thought the use was possibly appropriate. They then referred it to this board and the applicant then made its initial, his initial subdivision and preliminary site plan. Application, which we all the summer talked about the initial plan. With your help and with comments from the board, the applicant went back to the drawing boards and redesigned the plan. And submitted it the end of last month, and this is the plan we're looking at. Now, that's, that's it in a nutshell, that's essentially where we are, where it goes from here. Ultimately, we're going to have to take action on a preliminary subdivision and site plan. If that's granted, the applicant would come back and present final plans for both subdivision and site plan. And I think it's intent, his intent is to build it in phases, in at least two phases. In Canada, he would then submit those final plans, all the details. All the minutia of what has to be provided would then be hashed out at that point. And if that gets approval, then he's, he's good to go as far as that initial phase or phase. The seeker, I, I, I think the seeker is rather confusing and I, I don't know if we really want to. You know, get into the weeds of seeker as far as, but, but, but I will talk about seeker at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, we do need.
There is a potential action that we may take tonight that will keep the seeker process moving and.
With no decisions, obviously.
There'll be no decisions on the preliminary subdivision or site plan, because we have to wait thirty days after we. Declare our intent to be the lead agency on the seeker, so that would be thirty days from tonight, which would be November nineteenth, I think.
That's it, yes, that's in the resolution, yeah.
By the time it gets to the agencies and we would not be able to take any action on the site plan and the subdivision until. At the earliest November twenty third, we, so that's what we have done, that's what we're looking forward to. So, that sort of answered your question.
Yeah, so it doesn't go back to town board?
Yes, I can, yes, so that is, yeah, so there, yeah, I will, so after. Brennan and the applicant are on the town board agenda for next week to extend their. Basically, this preliminary plan had one hundred and eighty days to be approved. And we're pushing up against that deadline, that extend, that deadline is October twenty fourth. So the applicant has actually asked the town board to extend their deadline by ninety days, which is a normal procedure. So we, this, this plan will be, hopefully, the town board will bless it to ninety days extension, which would get. This board until January twenty second to approve the preliminary site plan. Once that happens, and correct me if I'm wrong. It goes back, applicant goes back to the town board. The parcel is rezoned into the mixed-use overlay. Comes back here for final approvals. Did I miss anything?
Exactly correct.
All right.
The only, the only caveat I would have, I guess, is. At, in that second. Set, the final approvals would be final overall and final phase one, and then they would come back for final phase two. Two years from now when they were ready to do that, but, yeah, I think that.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense. Seeker is, is a. A moving target, the board needs to see what the board wants to see and feels is necessary to make its determinations. And I think we've given the applicant some guidance on what they'd like to see and and then you'll have your experts review it. And move forward from there.
So, are we going to send it out for another review? This plan? This, this existing.
Yeah, it, that, that could be the action.
Yeah, that's something that could, that you need to consider tonight.
If we feel it's ready to go.
Okay.
If it's not ready to go.
That makes sense?
What, yeah, what I understand is it wants to sending it back up for coordinated review due to changes in the plan.
Right, that's.
Substantial change.
Substantial change. Right, and if we did that, we would add, we can add the schools, we'll add the schools to the review process. Right.
Right.
We just don't want to send that out a third time.
Right.
They're gonna say.
Well, it sounds like there might be some EAF part one corrections that need to be made.
That's correct, that's.
Can you get that?
Yes.
Can you, how soon can you make those, get those to the development office? Okay.
Okay.
So you could take that action tonight.
You could.
And delegate the review of a revised phase one to the development office. Because it sounds like there are corrections that. Well, and there's some stuff that's been revised, so.
I want to get to our guests, but before I do, I just had a couple of things I want to go over. I was a little unclear as to the location of the trails. Was it that clear? Everybody else in the board?
I found them.
It really didn't stick out to me. I'm sorry. Just highlighting the trails, make sure they're defined, location shown. We talked about the trail surface. Make sure that's. Really noted. Have you had any more coordination with Kevin Levine? You know, would you reach out to him and just, because I know we were talking back in June about.
Whenever.
Green buffers and.
Chris, the media came to know, there was no response.
Okay.
We can, I can coordinate that.
Yeah, I was, I was working with Chris Johnson.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that set up.
Was there ever consideration given to thinking this road a private road? Be now that we've got a rather, we've got, we've got the bubble. I'm not sure. Is Jim Futter seeing the bubble? With.
He hasn't. He hasn't commented yet.
Why I'm sitting on five rows, the school bus won't.
I'm just thinking, if we went to a private road. You could probably make it a little narrower, wouldn't have to be up to town standards and. Well, it's what, twenty-two feet now?
That's correct.
Yeah. But, you know, just brainstorming, just thinking, and I was also thinking if you poke well, somehow cut you off and wouldn't allow the road to go through. Then you would have a, you know, a road to be isolated and to be essentially like an apartment complex.
Yeah, we did. We originally did. So what about going private? And then we just realized, you know, school buses won't go on the road. That basically stopped that conversation.
But you know what you could do? Public loop road, private up the hill. And get your school bus pickup down here at your bus stop.
Was, was your intent to have the school buses go all the way up the hill and into?
Oh, all the way through.
Yeah, these eighteen's in the district.
Yeah.
Even though you were going into another school.
And then do three, three K turns and go back down the hill?
No, four, through the eighteen.
I think, yeah, I think it's still okay. I don't know where Marcus went from that start up there.
I think, I think Canada's schools does go down. So does anyone know?
Yes.
The local park goes down with the football property is definitely Canada.
It's, I think it's close, but yeah. Oh, right.
And lastly, once and for all, I want to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page regarding the N R I attributes that are involved with this project. I mean, you're saying steep slopes, potential wetland. Some northern forest. And you. Are there any other attributes on this property that are listed in the N R I?
Scenic. Well, it's really not scenic, Vista.
Okay. Well, you have, you have your plan, EX one hundred, existing one hundred. If you could.
Yeah, I saw them that comment.
Put on that plan where these attributes are, okay, and highlight them. And then calculate, I know, I know you calculated the open space, but you sort of went backwards, backwards to get into it. If you could calculate the area of each attribute, put that on the plan, add them up. Those are the constrained lands. Subtract that from your total. Total square footage, total acreage. That would lap, then we'd all be on the same page as far as what the forty percent. What has to be forty percent of that number? Understand what I'm saying?
I agree with what you're saying, but you read the way it's worded in the code, the code. Open space says it does not include stormwater management facilities, parking and road and driveways, steep slopes. And others constrain lands.
You subtract that all out.
You take your open, you take your total, you subtract all those figures out, you're in the final, and that's going to give us, that's exactly what we did.
So do we have a zoning law determination on this?
I'm, I'm not trying to, I did the same thing. And I was like, Logan, what are you doing? And then you read the way that definitely open space and says, open space includes this, less all of these, meaning it was total, total open space.
Total minus constrained lands.
Minus private parking lots, minus rooftops, minus.
And that gives you a total.
Total open space. And that's exactly the way it was done on the plans.
And that has to be more than forty percent of your show it to be, I think, total fifty.
Fifty-six, nine.
So, so can we?
I just want to make sure we're, we're straight on that. I will not bring it up again.
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask that the development office do a zoning law determination. Now that we don't trust you or your ability to interpret, but you know, I'd like to make sure it's the same interpretation as ours.
Okay.
Just, just to say, this is how the, this is how the code says to calculate it. This is how the applicant calculated it. Our numbers match.
Okay.
A couple of details. You have the utility junction boxes are all going to be landscaped. You mentioned that in your review. That's fine. As far as the, could you show a typical elevation of each building type with the landscaping you propose around those buildings? Because I think what we see in a lot of apartment complexes are electric meters, gas meters, air conditioning presses, H P A C that are. Sitting on a pad, facing the driveway. And I think if, if they can be shown in landscape, I know we did it with preview. It worked out pretty well. Have you looked at the? Three sixty-four carter study at all? I was going to look at.
Transportation study.
Yeah, the one that applies to pedestrian and bicycling and a lot of, you know.
Yeah, kayaking.
Modal.
Yeah.
Issues. Just to make sure if there's any relationship to the furniture of your property that we're blind, excuse me.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is a sidewalk. So we don't have. That would, yes, I would be glad to look at that a little harder.
Okay. Is this a waste or borrow earthwork project? Are you going to be borrowing?
It's a balance.
It's a balance?
Yeah.
Any update on the Hope Bell application?
Last review, the, which was the twenty. I believe it was October. We were there and they are waiting for coordinated review to come back out of this office before the.
That's what I thought.
We, we did talk to them about the new plan. But nothing's changed in Hope Bell side of things.
When you discuss that next with them.
It would be next meeting, which is going to be.
The fourth Monday, right?
Monday of the month, so.
Yeah.
Twenty-third.
All right, I think pretty well. Word of anything else, staff? Shawna, Greg, do you have anything before I go to the, our guests?
I do not at this point. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the public, virtual and in person. If, again, I ask if you have a comment, a question, come to the podium, state your name, address, try to keep it to three minutes or less. Don't be repetitive. And if you have a prepared statement and you can give us a copy of it, that would be helpful. So who wants to be first? Yes, sir.
Thank you, board. My name is Jeff Capovio, thirty-six oh six oh six, point. I don't want to dive into the traffic study, but one thing I have not heard. Is incoming traffic turning left. If you look, and I didn't really see it on the map. There's a curve on the north side of that. And if you've got a few cars turning left, stopped, dead in the road. And they're coming around that curve is a potential danger for severe accidents there. I just want to include that in the study.
Okay. Led by us and the app. Next, yes, ma'am.
Wasn't sure if you were talking to me.
Did he, did he push you up?
I'm Mary Maribold from thirty-five twelve Sandy Beach Drive and thirty-five twenty State Route three sixty-four. I want to know procedurally if I have a clarification asked of Mr. Marx. How do I do that? Can I just ask him?
Tonight or?
Yeah. I mean, it's just.
You asked the board.
I would like to know if the stormwater reduction percentages for the different, you know, one year, ten year, hundred year storms. If that means that after the development. If we have a ten year, let's say, storm, that the stormwater will be reduced by whatever it was ninety-six percent. Yeah, is.
I will allow Mr. Marx to answer that. I think that's what he said.
Ninety-six percent reduction in flow.
Offsite.
From what would happen today?
Right, from tenure, ninety-five point nine six.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Okay.
Oh.
You have hundreds of additional supporters to add to the petition.
Okay, thank you.
That's putting us a little bit over twelve hundred now.
And your name, sir?
Mark Holbert, five, nine, six, Attisia, a point.
Are these additions, in addition to what we already have?
Yes, the printed is, so there's several hundred in the printed and the handwritten ones are all. So the printed will give you a compilation of all of them to date.
Okay, so this is to date and these are the addition. Okay, got it.
Mark, is this an endorsement of the original petition or is it a new petition? So these, there's no new petition yet. It's an endorsement of the original petition and continuing since the August or the.
Okay.
Okay. So. They're not all residents. A bit more than half of them are from the town that's in the lake. Anything else? Yeah, I do. I do have a few things to state related to this project. And first of all, I'd like to commend the developers for listening to some of the concerns that. We've addressed in the petition and from the community. They're absolutely right. This project will impact local families. Local families that are already here. And unfortunately, they still have not addressed many very important concerns. There are still environmental concerns, community resource concerns, safety is still some of a concern. Financial ability to complete the project is growing when you consider this scope is a hundred and fifty percent the size of Kupa shores. The project does not meet a sufficient number of the goals of the revised comprehensive plan of the town. We must be stewards of this lake and community. Most environmental concerns have not been met. Mask clearing will decimate this property. The marine tributaries identified by the watershed quest to leave mature trees. With the recent extreme late harmful algae bloom, we see how sensitive this lake is more than ever, and it's happening later in the year. As we consider major events, we should be looking at five hundred year events and not one hundred year events when we're looking at runoff concerns. This has also been stated in the comprehensive plan. Responsible manager has also not been seen on the existing Kupa shore property with things like silt fences missing and runoff going across the road. Light pollution is expected to be a concern on this property also with streetlights that have been added. Considered community resource concerns when you consider discussing a thirty-five million dollar investment. According to the town comprehensive plan, page one oh two, the median cost to provide public services for residential for every dollar revenue raised costs us a dollar sixteen. That's already a high cost on top of whatever else might come from this project. The dedicated road is a large cost to community. High density residential places, a great burden on community resources. Human density is likely higher in the new scope of this project. Water uses concerns increased by thirty-nine thousand to forty-nine thousand gallons of water per day stressing lake levels if you assume four point two people. Safety is still somewhat of a concern. We're not adding anything to pedestrians on three sixty-four. Fire load pressure would be a concern when there's not enough pressure for the residential homes at the top of the property. Seen a few concerns. The upper portion of this project will still appear to not fit within the scenic views. And green spaces that highlighted as a concern. As we stated earlier, residential comes with a financial burden on the taxpayer. This should be mitigated and we know that the town will be responsible for the dedicated roadway. But what about the maintenance of the retention ponds into perpetuity? Support of the comprehensive plan. I know you're forced to follow law and the comprehensive plan. But this is where we all have a duty to be stewards as well as allow for responsible growth. We must also hear the voice of the people from which input was taken to build the comprehensive plan. On page ninety-nine of the comprehensive plan, it states that with over thirteen hundred homes needed, the town should be concerned that these units do not adversely impact valuable resources like farmland or woodland. This project directly contradicts that statement. In the survey related to the comprehensive plan completed by the town, it shows a clear indication by the people that they do not wish to see high density housing along the lake. See question seventeen of the survey, page one eighty-eight of the comprehensive plan. Four plus living units are most discouraged. Question eight, page one ninety-four specifically indicates that people do not want multiplexes in this area. On top of the five concerns and the objectives of the town indicate agriculture and environment, and this project is directly contrary to that. On page thirty-five of the comprehensive plan, parcel has been identified as having important agricultural importance. On page twenty-six of the comprehensive plan, it indicates the Northern hardwood protection plant strategy. And on page ninety-two, it stated that there's a need to update the two thousand eighteen open space map. And develop responsible plans for M U O three, which this parcel lies in. Simply M U O three is probably designated wrong for this parcel. On page ninety-four, it states that as it is appropriate, many of the town's provisions for zoning. Were intended to promote the previously stated purpose. However, over long periods of time, our understanding of the impacts which specific types of regulations. Have on our community has evolved and the town must be prepared to update the regulations accordingly. Despite the fact that this property has been identified for mixed use. Or potential mixed use, which could allow for zoning change, the zoning is still R one twenty. And should remain such or be left as agriculture or woodland. There are plenty of locations this project could fit. Better fit. This project should not be approved. Thank you.
Is that a written statement?
Can I take that?
I can send you one if that's.
Yeah, can you email me?
I sure will.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Marigold. I'm at thirty-five twelve Sandy Beach and thirty-five twenty. Route three sixty-four. Entire bottom half, if we can go to the drainage map without. Everything in their design loaded, the lower pond has no drainage. They're stated that they're going to have the downspouts of the buildings run into the ground. Well, the ground in that entire area is ranked C and D, which are the two worst areas of soil to absorb water. So how do they expect that water to get from below the buildings and below the pond, back into those ponds before it runs off? Into the next property north of there. My property runs along that creek. My huge concern is. That creek overflowing, we've had it happen twice in the last five years. Our cottage is raised up, so we don't have as much problem, but the cottage next to me has been flooded where the water runs in the front door and out the back door and into the lake. It's a huge problem. How they get these numbers that they're going to have ninety-five percent of the water is going to be reduced. And I mean, come on, where do you get those numbers? And how do you expect water that won't soak into the grounds to go to those ponds? That's my question.
Okay, I think one clarification. I think the applicant said the downspouts would go into a collection system. It's not just going into the ground. It's going in the collection system eventually, go to the base of the.
Okay, because one of their site plans said that they were just going to have downspouts that run it into the grass and let it absorb.
That's.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brian, why don't you?
The D C has outlined the best management practice or storm, which is basically disconnected the store, storm roof leaders or downspouts from the stormwater management practice. By doing that, you're basically splashing. By doing that, you're basically splashing to grade. The downspouts, like many houses, are very common too. However, the grade is not sloped with a positive drainage to the stormwater management facility or to the storm sewer, which then would convey it to the pond. So we're disconnecting it by letting it splash onto the grade, onto the vegetated surface, which also removes nutrients such as phosphorus nitrogen and absorbed by the initial vegetation that's taking it. But then the, the higher fence will then run over the ground surface and what is not infiltrated into the ground will then be absorbed into the stormwater management facility and storm sewer.
So it's on the ground, not in the ground?
There's, there's obviously, the grasses will take up.
Oh, yeah.
Percentage.
But I mean.
Especially on the first.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Eighty-four percent of the lower first development is rated C or D, which are the second or the third or fourth worst absorption areas. Where's that water gonna go? That's, that's, it's gonna go into that unnamed creek and flood my properties.
They are C and D soils, so, but we're not relying on a hundred percent infiltration, absorption into that grass surface. You're gonna end up with the topsoil and grasses which will absorb it, especially during dry seasons, will absorb a percentage, not all of the stormwater. If work is just not mentioned.
All right, anyone else here? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Hannah Coney, three five nine six.
Welcome back.
I want to point out a few things around Cuba Shores, because that's been referenced a few times in relationship to this project. And the realistic viewpoint of this project three years out. So Cuba Shores is eighty-two units, not nearly the size of Canada Shores. That's been in process for about three years now. And if you take a drive down there, which I think several of you have, that does not in any way, shape or form reflect what I would think a responsible development should look like after three years for eighty-two units that worked through COVID. In relation specifically to the units, the landscaping or lack of the grass, which is non-existent, the backyards that walk out facing the road. That road is a much, I would say more appropriate designated road for a project like Cuba Shores rather than East Lake Road. If you look at that, there are five commercial properties surrounding Cuba Shores, two of which are food, one being Morgan Marine, Red Jacket Park, and then the Hampton and opinion. That is a much more suitable location for a project like Cuba Shores or Canada Shores. Not East Lake Road, which is completely surrounded by residential and streams wildlife and steep sloping graves of land that faces the lake. The school bus, I think I believe that this was marketed towards empty nesters and those who are retired. So I really failed to see the need for the school buses and the additional items to be put in for those people who are not empty nesters, which seems to be majority of Cuba Shores. And then lastly, the, the pictures, we have pictures that I'd like to submit, word, I can emails those to you of the condition of Cuba Shores. So in looking at that, comparing this project, which is larger to Cuba Shores, I highly doubt that in three to four years, you will see anything more than mounds of dirt from the lake, silt fence falling down as you see at Cuba Shores and a failure to present something that is something that we would like represented in our community along East Lake Road.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brene Matarra, I'm at forty-one twenty-two. We've heard, I've been here several times and we've all heard comments.
Speak up.
We, sorry. We've all heard the comments from the concerns of the existing residents here. And certainly, they voiced valid concerns about the traffic levels, about erosion, potential adverse environmental effects that this project may have if it is approved. All these certainly are your responsibility to take into consideration, but they're not the only things to consider. No one will argue that the right to build when in compliance with all zoning constraints. But the motive for development is profit. It is profitable to build a population dense development. This is a relatively small parcel of land. It would also generate a greater tax revenue for the town than its current state. But the argument here is not about denying development in the town candidate. It's about understanding the impact on the entire lake and the communities that border it. Not just the town, but all the communities that border the lake. And ensuring that there will be no negative consequences to unroll. The question here is risk versus reward, business people deal with that all the time. Is the short term reward worth a long term problem? It's about understanding. Well, actually, what I would ask this board is to consider something more than economics. Consider the precedent that will be set if this project is approved. If it's allowed to go forward as planned, it will set a precedent. Agricultural land will become more valuable to sell to development than to farm. If more like this fall, it will have a negative impact on the entire area as well as our natural resources, including wildlife and the lake. It can't not. None of us own candidate lake, but by living here, we share the responsibility to protect its future. Each of you needs to be one hundred percent confident that this project will make this area better. And there will not be any negative consequences to the lake in the short or the long term. There will be no opportunity for a do-over. It will not be unbuilt if you are wrong. This board is responsible for any consequences to the entire lake and watershed area. And I would ask that are you willing to put your name down and accept this responsibility? Because as residents, we all accept the responsibility off the lake, and I ask that you do the same.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to make sure we heard everything you said. If you could send a copy of your statement to, to Shauna, do you have it in the record? Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to, yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Mike Maxwell, I live at thirty-six hundred East Lake Road. And in the conversations tonight, there's been a lot of discussion around the traffic study that was done. And I think nobody's coming away with great confidence that that data is something that we rely on. And I'd just like to add some comments here for the board to consider in looking at the traffic analysis. You have a complex and you have elements in there, the variables of the car, that's what we're looking at. Doesn't matter how many residents there is, how many cars are gonna be using the property and coming on to three sixty-four or Route eighteen. The drivers make up that demographic. Are they under eighteen type of drivers? Are they college students? Are they young families? Are they retirees? So those demographics go into the statistical analysis that the traffic study is doing. Somebody's making an assumption that X percentage are gonna be in one category, another percentage in a second category, third category, and so on. And if they stay in that grouping, they go forward with the analysis and say, okay, between seven and eight, we're gonna have eight percent of this group, nine percent of this group, two percent of that group, zero percent of that. Between nine and ten, we're gonna have another mix. And all that goes into the formulation to the say, is this a safety issue for the traffic? If those assumptions are only a single point, the data analysis is risky. And all the statistical analysis work that I've been involved in, there was always a range that was to be done. And the range serves two purposes. One is to give you a better look at what could be and taking into consideration, rather than use a single point analysis, let's vary these models to come up with different scenarios. The second thing is the analysis will do with you with the range study is it's gonna tell you where your crisis point is. At what point does it go over the edge? That this becomes too risky to do according to some other analysis. So maybe the S R M study is accurate, I don't know, because we haven't seen the method in which they got to their conclusions. But I would counsel planning board to be sure that you have someone that looks at that and drills down into that data much more so than what's been presented so far. Because there is the possibility that it could start out with one analysis that maybe looks pretty good. But what happens over three to five years of people that's saying? The kids that are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, not driving today, or when they move in, become drivers in four or five or six years. What happens if the retirees decide to go to Florida? They sell the properties off and now you have more college students coming in. As landlords, if they got vacancy, they're not gonna say, oh, no, we're just retirement community. Right, they're gonna take the revenue. So, and including, that's why I say, take the time to get ranges, to get multiple scenarios, so that you better have, have a better feeling as to where this thing can start to go wrong. Because if it's wrong in the analysis, the next question is, if there's a remedy, who's gonna pay for it? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, who else, sir?
My name's Adam Rafman, I'm the Vice President of Administration and Chief Financial Officer at F L C C. On the job three months now, found out about this project yesterday. But I was asked to come here to just represent F L C C. We will remain neutral on this project as far as F L C's official standpoint. I can speak to its impact to our operations, which my professional opinion do not believe it will have any impact on our operations at the campus. Generally speaking, and not in relation to this property or project, any increase in the service area for any institution in higher education is specific, specifically community college. It seems that it's a good thing because it increases our chances at recruiting potential students. But I just wanted to put that out there, and also if there are any other further questions regarding this project moving forward, feel free to reach out to me and I'd be more than happy to answer those questions whenever I can, if I have my business card, would that be?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Adam, thanks for coming. I will tell you, the, the board of directors of the, of the college had requested they be included as a interested party in the seeker review. And I, I think the board will, will, will consider and I'm sure they'll probably accept that inclusion, so you'll be in the loop. Anyone else? Anybody in virtual land? Go out there, wake up. Get, get our attention and we'll onto YouTube. Please. Board, board member Karen, where is that?
Thank you.
Your mark, wanna say something?
They've probably gone to bed now.
All right, I'm not hearing anything from anybody else. All right, well, I guess we have a decision to make, how do we wanna handle the seeker resolution regarding our intent to be the lead agency? And based on what you've heard tonight, is there anything? I know we threw some things out to consider, and I'm sure you will consider them. Is there any thoughts of making further revisions to plans to any substance? Based on what you've heard? Don't think so?
I, I do wanna discuss one thing that Greg Motelli just stated was the configuration of town home building. These aren't eight units across.
Sure.
And I, most typical town home units I see are more linear in fashion. There's no real way to put arcs, maybe you could have some staggered buildings, but staggered units themselves. But at this point, we wanna stick with the layout we have with the, for those upper units because of the topography, because of the site constraints that we have, steep slopes and.
You did hear concern from a number of board members, including myself, about the, the layout of phase two. That could be looked at. I know at one point you talked about an eyebrow configuration to maybe take out the, but I guess that's.
They, they are slightly skewed to each other, they are more like, as far as we can go with what we have.
So if it's, if it's gonna look like a barracks and be pretty ugly, then this board's gonna have a problem with your, your view shed requirements. If it's not, then why don't, I think you could probably find some comparable layouts, photographs of comparable layouts either locally or, or, you know, somewhere else, you know, go do a Google search for townhouse layouts and show, show the board some pictures that, that says this doesn't look like a barracks. I've seen townhouse layouts, I don't think it's gonna look as, as bad as it looks in, in a one dimensional site plan. That's my personal opinion, but I think the applicant, but probably, this is just a recommendation, a suggestion. Show some, show some examples, right, that'd be useful.
Yeah. I know, I, I've seen, I've seen elevation views of some of your, your buildings. I don't think you've really presented them here yet. Maybe that would be helpful, because they are one story, two story, one story. I mean, they're not your typical, you know, up and downtown house.
We do have some.
Well, your building number one picture, I think that's the concern.
That is.
Is that they're all gonna look like building number one.
Right.
But I don't think they are.
No, I think the, the best thing to look at would be to, would scroll down.
It's the renderings and the bat, yeah.
That's an example of how it would look with the single story and the two story, yeah, single, yeah, yeah.
That's not what you see from the lake. You don't see the part of the house, see the back of it.
Folks, folks, the boards, we gotta keep quiet in the public.
So, yes, we can provide some additional elevations from the lakeside.
And, and like I said, and speaking, you know, a typical, typical building, that would be helpful to us. All right, does the board want to move this thing to a seeker? Start the thirty day clock on the decoration lead agency? The reason I ask, probably it's gonna make any substantial changes, if it was, you don't wanna start it and then stop it and have to restart it again. Everybody loses time there. So if you wanna move this thing on, at least as far as declaring ourselves lead agency, starting the thirty day clocks, which would mean the next time we would consider the application formally would be on the twenty-third.
Yes, of November.
Allowing the thirty days to expire. How do you feel?
As long as they provide that you say watch.
The fact that we know part one's gonna be changed.
Yeah, I'm struggling with that a little bit.
Cause you're gonna send it out and then you're gonna say, well, here's your revision of part one, yeah.
I honestly, I don't know. I think I would err on the side of caution and say, let's put this on the agenda for two weeks from now when you have sort of the finalized stuff. Yeah, but, but it's.
Well, then we could have part one done.
Yeah, it's mostly for that E A F part one that I. That I think the, I believe the law for the seeker regulations require that you have that. And right now you don't have that. You have one for the last, last form. Yes, Mr. Secher.
In an effort to be as consistent as possible. Is there any way that we could? Want the responsibility of being the lead agency from this planning board? And pump that responsibility out of the town board so that there's accountability, so that there's. I guess that's right, accountability. And I, and I proposed this for the last project that we just saw. Two months ago. Because of the issues that are important. So I just want to kind of revisit that discussion. I know we that kind of heated up last time. I, I guess. Being lead agency is, is a really important responsibility. And it's something that I don't think that we take lightly. I think that, you know, I take it very seriously. But of a project of this scope and this magnitude. I think it warrants consideration that the town board take on that responsibility. So that we can have good dialogue at the highest level of our go.
And I think, I think you make a very good point, especially in this case because. An agency needs to be the lead agency and seeker needs to be conducted. For any actions. An action would be site plan approval or subdivision approval or rezoning into mixed use over like this. So you make a very good point. At, at your request, I've, I've looked into it, into the matter. When two or more ball boards have actions. Pending before them, which is in this case, the pla- planning board and the town board. And neither wants to be lead agency. Then the, then the, actually the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation assigns one. Based on my experience, I've talked this over with. Lance Braybant, who has even more experience in seeker matters. Both of us concur that the planning board would be the one assigned. And the reasons being is that the action, the primary action. And the action with more detail is the site plan approval and the subdivision approval, the more technical review. So while, while it is a good process, the only, the only option available would be to call the town board up and say, hey, are you guys interested in taking this over? And then they could make a quick declaration of intent to be lead agency. While I can't obviously speak on their behalf as town attorney, I'm, I would recommend against them taking that obligation because. The planning board is the entity. With the technical expertise to review this application. If. Both agencies wanted to be the lead agency. Again, the Department of Environmental Conservation Commissioner would say, nope, you. Or you could, you, there's, there's a process for doing, for separating the two, but. But the, the meat of the seeker issues lie with this board. And its staff, including the town engineer, myself and the development department staff. But also with this board's particular expertise in reviewing this type of application, it would be remiss. To, to, to have the town board do that. Based on the, the type of application. Does that answer your question?
Not, not according to what I.
Well.
And I, and I, it does, I just, you know, we have this long discussion and I'm going to.
Me too.
Yes, I know.
No, it's a good question, especially in this.
Like, you know, I, they have, they were seeker, they, they were the lead agency for the whole bottom part. They have been leading in the past. And this, these projects are big projects that impact our town, you know, like they're so big. And I just, and it's just philosophical and it's nothing against us. I'm not going to stop asking.
So you raise a good point. Let me be clear. The town board is qualified to do seeker on the stuff it does seeker, seeker for and has expertise on those things. But this board has the expertise to do the seeker on, on a site plan approval.
The other thing, Ryan, we have the resources. Yeah, I, I think, you know, we have the resources, the experience. I, I don't see why the town board would be. The lead agency on this. I think we ought to take our responsibility and move on.
I, I don't disagree. I, I think it's really just because of.
So where are we on the part one? Needs, needs some changes.
Yes.
He's going to have it by the end of the week.
Three corrections they got to make and seeker is conducted by the town board for the M U O adoption. Are this specific to this project?
I don't think so.
We submitted a seeker for it.
Oh, you did? No, but I'll look at that one again.
So just to clarify, there's a separate.
So you mean that the town board already did a seeker when they were established and that makes yourself like.
No, 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 not that. For the specific, they haven't acted.
They haven't acted. It's, it's.
For the rezoning. For the, for the parcel rezoning.
Which is specific to this project.
Which is usually a short EAF.
No, it was full.
It's usually a short EAF.
I think this seeker would cover.
Star sider was a fully A F two.
With M U O. Right.
Yeah, there's three corrections I need to make.
Yeah, that's a better answer than my answer.
I like that answer, Brennan.
Sorry, Chris.
No. If I had known, I would have given you that answer. Sort of solves the problem.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing you guys, if you guys would. Declare a lead agency inside coordinator review with the corrections that I have to make to the part one that you submitted, which is the total correct units per phase. The total of water uses.
Slow down, slow down. So total units per phase?
Yes, since we, we declared two phases and that's the previous one was not two phases.
Okay.
Actually, it was, yes, two phases. The, the total number of water usage has changed as a correction.
Total number of gallons?
Total gallons of water usage and waste water usage.
Okay.
And then there.
Why did that change?
Better numbers.
Just didn't, just technical.
Technical.
But no change in the scope of the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Changes of the dates of construction when it's moved.
Those changes are a result of just technical improvements.
Improvements. Well, we had a thousand foot road too. So, and then there is over transportation.
I don't think it would kill anybody to, to declare it tonight.
Can you get that? You can get it to me soon. Yeah, tomorrow. It's not going to go out before tomorrow anyways.
Declare your intent to be lead agency and then they'll send, they'll make the sending out, they'll send stuff out. Once they have that. So those, it's my legal opinion that those should, those have no impact on your ability to declare intent to be lead agency.
Oh, yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, because if we get the revised EAF tomorrow. I mean, Greg. Greg, are you still on? I gave it to Chuck. Yeah.
Wake up.
Can we get these out in the mail by Thursday?
I think the plan was to get them out because he's got the nineteenth. So I'm just trying to.
Yeah, the nineteenth on the.
November nineteenth is the end of the coordination period, right?
The November, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I think he planned on mailing them out by Friday.
Okay, so we're still on target then. Basically is here's the new stuff. If you have comments. If, or.
Specific concerns. That are related to one particular agency or department or whatever. Dive into that a little bit?
Absolutely.
The planning board has specific concerns related to this, 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 which are under your firm's authority.
And either.
Want to make sure that they comment on that stuff.
Sure, that letter is not, is not the way, is not the location for that though. It's a separate.
Yeah.
You, you can tell Shawna in a meeting or, you know, by, you know. Between meetings, you send her an email, say, I want to know what Jim Fletcher thinks of this road. Can you please get a, you know, can you please ask if I want to know what? You know, I want to know if there's enough.
Yeah, check with the school.
I want to know.
Capacity, yeah.
Send the specific questions and the town planner is the person to get those answers for it.
Not in the seeker.
Yeah, if, if I can just quickly jump in, you know, this first part is really just saying.
That we're.
Does anyone object to us being lead agency?
Yeah.
You know, is anyone else more fit to be lead agency than the planning board? That's all this is doing. We're giving some cursory information just so they, they can look at it and say. Yeah, I guess the planning board would be a good lead agency or the D C will come up, nope, this is not good for you guys. We're going to take care of this. So that's what this, this initial step is.
Okay, board, then we have a resolution to consider our intent to be the lead agency. To finally, well, through amended seeker and I will make a motion that we adopt this revolution. Saying that it is our intent, the planning board should be the agency in the seeker review. Unless my attorney has something.
Your attorney has something. See, let's change the name of it to seeker amended application. Because this is not an amended seeker. Didn't dawn on me until you just read it. This is a seeker for an amended application.
But essentially says that the thirty day clock is starting on the review. It will go out to both. Invited and interested parties. I. Separate thing. I don't want to muddy up this with a issue. I, I do request that the community college be included as an interested agency. There were about four or five interested agencies on that list, so we, one more. You want to include the school district?
Yes.
So the school district will also be. Part of the resolution job, but it's just a consensus of the boards that they included. And I'll get back to the resolution. So I, I make a motion again to adopt this resolution, which would have a thirty day clock. Start on November nineteenth as far as any responses back from invited interested agencies and.
I will second on one condition, Chuck. Would you, would you accept that? We do the same thing we did on the last project and add the town board as an interested party?
Yeah, I think that's actually, that's probably appropriate because they have the mixed juice.
Yes, we can do that. I would say involved.
They may be involved. Are they already on there?
No.
They weren't involved.
And then, and, and I would, I would, I will support this. I did not support the last one. I will support this because they are going to, the town board is going to go through a secret process. So I will second that motion support.
Okay.
All right, I'll have a listen in a second for Brian. Do the discussion. Favor. The last thing on this application continuation, do we want to continue to the, to the twenty third? Which is when we could take action or any, any action on this application? Or do we want to revisit it at our meeting on the twelfth?
Twenty sixth?
Yeah. Could be the twelfth in November?
Ninth.
What is it? What's the first and second?
The twelve.
No, 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 I do.
We can't, right, we can't.
Twenty sixth.
Okay, and how about our November meeting?
Well, maybe it. It'll sort of depend on how soon he can get a punched up traffic study, right?
The second meeting in November.
I'll leave it up to the applicant. We can continue to, not the twenty sixth.
It's the ninth of November.
First being November or definitely the twenty third.
The first meeting in November, you, you will not be beyond the thirty day.
Yeah, we'll still be in our thirty day window.
Well, we, we, we continued hearings within the thirty days just for, but certainly no action just to get updates.
We just can't take.
The applicant had, he's referring to the twenty third, the twenty three?
My God, that agenda.
We continue the public hearing until November twenty third.
It's hunting season, I'll tell you that.
So I got a motion to continue to the twenty third.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? On paper? I will take your questions, sir.
Twenty third is two days before Thanksgiving. Was that an issue?
Not for us. Okay. All right, so thank you folks for your input, coming out, spending such a nice evening indoors. Looking at us.
Yeah, it is. It is. I just want to continue. Can we just keep going? After, after Bob goes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks folks. Have a good night.
Bye, take care. Thanks for coming.
All right.
Also, just so you guys are aware, on the seeker involved agency list, I do have the town board on here already.
You do?
Yeah. At least on, I have Kathy Town Supervisor on here.
Oh, because it's on the other side of the paper. Got it.
So Ryan strikes his condition. This is already in there.
There it is.
I just wanted to prove her one step ahead of Ryan, that's all.
Okay, hang on. You can sort of take credit, but I can guarantee you didn't come up with that list Lance did.
He's not here to confirm nor to deny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lance wouldn't have put that out if he didn't know that Ryan's stage.
Oh, yeah. They can't even spell seeker.
Can't spell S O B.
Chuck, Ryan just gave you compliments.
Wow.
Ryan complimenting, I don't think so.
Oh, my God.
Twenty eighth of September, John did a fine job.
Those minutes are fantastic. I love the minutes.
Shawna says, top of the line.
They are. They're the most detailed I've ever made. They're, they set the bar.
No referrals from town board, Shawna?
No.
Nothing.
C B A is doing their thing.
They're doing their thing.
Chris is doing his thing. Okay, we're going to give away some money tonight. All right.
Clear you're returning them.
Give away. Here you go.
And Catmy gets a Subaru.
Two resolutions, I'll bundle them.
Uh, this is the extension. They're both on there.
You can move, you can move the extension too, all in one.
Oh, let's do it.
Okay, I've got a request from Kelly Bestel and Richard Twelve. Thirty three twelve homework to release their one and only surety. For erosion semi patient control. I also have requests from Robert Amy Tate. At fifty two seventy nine Black Rock Drive, also erosion and seven patient control surety. Also, erosion and sanitation control charity, first and final release, the takes are five hundred dollars, the. Well, is thirty four hundred eighty, seventy nine dollars. I assume looking at the. Has been signed off by Jim and Chris, and they have, so I have a motion.
Shawna's good?
Damn good with both of them.
The bundle.
Bundle and release.
Okay, all favor. Okay.
Ryan.
No, Bob did.
That's Bob.
Bob moved it.
You have to look up to see who's.
All right, on this ninety extension, ninety day extension from Albert Hollis, fifty seven forty four Rand Road. His reason being, he's still working to address the conditions of approval, Brad. I I I'm always one for a little more detail as to why the need the extension, but just addressing. I know, I know we had the COVID issues, we had the materials and supplies issues, just just to say they're working on addressing them.
Well, we I've discovered in looking at our documents that we have a request form. That I've actually started to have applicants use, so and it has the reason why and the applicant signs and so if we want to.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's in the warehouse.
Yeah.
Okay, that being so.
So we'll be using those from now on.
I will make a motion, we grant the ninety day extension is the first. To Mr. Hollis, I have a second. Thank you, Gary, in favor.
It's a classy move to say your name after the second. Because, well, because John's sleeping back there and sometimes he doesn't catch it.
He's not sleeping. I don't think he sleeps.
John, do you want to move over here?
Yeah, I think we should.
I've. Yeah, yeah, also, you're good for morale to actually see you. Get sort of an overview. Yeah.
Isn't that where, what's her name sits, clerk?
Kristen?
Chris, no.
What clerk?
Whoever, whoever keeps the town board.
Oh, she sits back there.
Jane sits where John sits.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I don't think that would go over great.
Ryan's gonna start sitting there.
You guys can. You guys can all squeeze.
Other business. How we going with the advertising for a new board member? Or at least they're older than it initially.
I'm not, I don't understand why people don't want to sit on this board.
I'll do it.
Right?
Have you checked with the?
I haven't checked with Robin. It's on my list. Oh, I can't, I'm gonna, there's something I wanted to say, but I'm not. I gotta wait.
I think you should have to recruit your own replacement.
That's what I'm saying. You can't leave until you get a.
Yeah, don't you have friends that are interested? I think it's a great.
You have another way you want to give this out to?
There's so many professionals in this community that.
I think there's got to be a better way for us to get the word out about it. I mean, I do, I I if we push it out on Facebook, our Facebook page, I don't think we've done that.
Oh, we'll do that.
Let's do that.
There's.
Um, I mean, not, what did we do? Put it in the paper? Nobody reads that.
Offer free dinners.
Who's that?
I think we should. We used to, Gates County, we used to do stuff. Because they didn't get paid anything.
I I didn't realize it was paying, but after I got in.
Oh, it's not. If if you guys have been getting any money, just give it back, please.
Not really, you don't add up the hours. I miss my kids' football game.
All right, keep up with your training, folks. Next meeting.
So what am I doing, blasting it out on Facebook?
Come up with fifteen different ways.
I will.
You can call me.
Fifteen reasons why you want to be on the planning board. Why don't we do a video? Well, I know, because I'm looking at, well, yeah, but we've got one that I have my eye on.
You can call me and I can help you give you some ideas. I've helped the.
Okay, next meeting. No Bob, right? Twenty six? No Bob.
Wedding. That's awesome.
You're about to have three. Grandpa Bob, yeah, haven't you ever heard of him?
Don't knock it. All right. So we got, we got. Four applications, they're listed the agenda.
The twenty third, you're going this fall for November.
Kansas County Secret Service Seeker, when you get to part one. Really look at it, you know, go through it, because part one then leads into part two. And then, and how the questions are answered in part one, help us answer the questions of part two, and you know what, we went through it for two.
Well, I was gonna say, maybe our staff, and by that I mean Lance, can sort of pre do some. We can do that more efficiently, that process.
He did it, but no, we went back and changed things.
Yeah.
Then I'll take this into part three and have to.
Yeah, but I think we can. We can do that more efficiently, like sort of like appendixes, like, okay, what's the answer to this? Boom.
Read it.
Well, that's what you need it, you need it on paper beforehand, before the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Abs, you can't, you cannot look at that online.
I mean, you know, at some point, we're just gonna have to, I know the town wants to save eight, five hours a year, but.
Are you not printing cap?
Of what?
Of these applications for them? Did someone tell us not to do that?
I don't know, there was no application.
Anybody want hard copies? Yeah, I would say you guys need full size plans for just about.
No, they don't, not for everything.
I specifically asked on this, and we have.
You did.
On copies.
Yep, and he.
Certainly.
It's super helpful.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do a long EAF and two and three, you need paper.
Okay.
You guys can come pick them up.
The town can foot. Five dollars worth of.
Listen, I came from Yates County. We didn't mail anything. We delivered it on horse and buggy. Literally.
Yeah, literally, the town, four or five bucks worth.
Well, we will do that. I'm just trying to be responsible. We do, we actually do.
Can you make good paper out of ash trees? Really?
Can you? I thought, doesn't it burn real fast? How does it burn?
Amazing.
Does it?
I'm not, no, we do, there's a good training I sent Chuck about the. There's a, there's a training through Cornell coming up with.
Oh.
I strongly recommended, I went to it a couple of years last year, maybe two years ago, top notch stuff. It was over at Hobart Williams Smith.
Didn't, Kim, did you send us that? Or is that Spotted Lantern?
Oh, that's.
Oh. You did. Was that from Finger Lakes Institute?
Yes.
Okay, they have good stuff.
It really is, it's free, it's on, I think it's gonna be Zoom this year, something to everybody. And they really get down into the dirt about the 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 most recent.
Oh, okay.
Because he has to qualify for training.
If you haven't heard, like, there was one, I was able to win last weekend. The direction of shores, wow, thirty five miles long.
Wow.
In October, that is not good news.
Was that tracked like by satellite or?
There was photographs of it overhead, maybe by.
Oh, drone or something.
But it was one of the largest ones that we've had. So it's just, it's kind of striking that we're having this late, but there was a rainfall event and there was, but there was winds and winds are supposed to kind of like.
Stir it up.
You know what I mean? It's just, it's.
What about the warm, warm weather?
Yeah, the rain too may have caused more erosion that went to the lake, so it would just be nice to hear the latest science on how we can help protect it, like, is this a storm or not, or are these? I do like that double pond system, you know what I mean, right? They're not here, but it's it's should be a good training overall, so just a heads up on that. It's going to you.
We have a chat, somebody has a question. I don't have my glasses, so.
He just texted, I said yes.
Oh, he wants to go.
One thing I think.
I just told him it's fine.
Instead of seeking an alternate. Seek a perspective.
Member, sure.
We anticipate a need for a full time, full for, you know, planning board.
Yeah, that's how we.
Because some, somebody might say.
Now that you're.
But if they think, oh.
It's a little easier to sell a member than.
Yeah, and we've only advertised for the alternate.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you know, we don't have an official resignation, we don't want to see it, but. But I think.
Well, you know what, though, we should be advertising for membership on boards. Relatively regularly, so we get a file of resumes.
Okay, give it to H R, that's not something H R does.
They do not.
Motion to adjourn this meeting at eight twenty six P M.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Chris.